Let me call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. It is 7:02 PM. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a couple of items to cover in executive session, and when that's done, we'll come back. Could I get a motion, please, to go into executive session? Mike moves, Sarah seconds, all in favor. All right, we'll be back. Okay, 7:46, got to get a motion to return to open session. Sarah moves, Marcy seconds, all in favor. Okay. Next up is First Selectman's report, few items today. First time in my tenure, we had a visit from a state official. Our comptroller, Sean Scanlon, came on January 23rd, and we showed him around to several businesses. He was here to talk about a retirement program that the state sponsors, and it was quite interesting just to hear him talk about what they offered and to talk to small businesses here in town, which I really appreciated. He then presented a senior drug program, actually for anybody, a drug program where you can actually get a card. Anyone can apply for this. And what you can do is compare the price of a drug that you get with the price that you might get with your own drug insurance card. And he was here to answer questions with the senior citizen group over at the Mathers Center. Anyway, I appreciate the comptroller coming down. It was terrific to have him in town. And apparently, the Lego collection at the Darien toy box is such that he will have to bring his kids back to Darien. So he said, "I've never seen some of this stuff." And I said, "Get out your credit card controller." The train noise effort, I had someone come in and meet me about that. So you recall, this is the effort to try to put in a quiet zone on the New Canaan branch line. We had a call with the comptroller, or the comptroller, with the Commissioner of Transportation for the state of Connecticut about 10 days ago. And that process is continuing, not a simple matter by any means. But our next step is to actually engage in some discussions directly with the Federal Railroad Administration, which the Commissioner sent in an email even just this morning that was in process. They had asked for that, so more to come on that. But getting the feds at the table is the next step in that process. We did some tours this weekend. I know Lori Bora and Jen Fava from Parks and Rec are here with us today. I just want to thank you both for helping us with that. But those were tours to look at the proposed investments in Weed Beach for the short lane property, as well as flood remediation and erosion prevention at Pear Tree Point Beach. So thanks to everybody who braved the cold and didn't get hospitalized like frostbite, by frostbite, like I thought I was going to have to be. But we appreciate that, and also to Craig Flaherty for showing up at Pear Tree Point Beach. His explanations of all that were terrific. And finally, today, I was at a press conference in New Canaan that was hosted by Deanna Carlson, who's the first selectman there. In attendance were Senator Ryan Fazio from the Greenwich area, as well as Tracy Mara, Representative Mara from our area. The topic of all that, along with several other first selectmen who were there, was the sale by EverSource of Aquarian to what's called the Regional Water Authority, which is a New Haven-based sort of quasi-municipal water authority. That process, I think, has been fraught. And I think there was unanimity among the reps there, as well as all the first selectmen, that this outcome has the real prospect for raising water rates for Aquarian customers for a fairly long list of reasons. We're going to be speaking more about this at some length, just to try to make sure everyone's eyes open about the prospect for this and what's next in the process. The transaction's just been announced, but it's going to be something that has to be reviewed and approved by PURA, which is the state's regulatory agency for regulated utilities. So more to come on that, but just want to know that everybody to know that that was still in process. Any questions for me? Okay, next up, Board Liaison Reports, Sarah Newman.
So the last thriving youth Darien meeting was on January 16th. And with good attendance, they went over some strategies for community change and the fact that the next survey, which will be done at the high school, will be done in around now, late January, early February. There is some programming that occurred at the end of January, but there is some coming up this spring, and so I'll have more dates for you soon. The next meeting will be on March 20th at 9:30 AM at the Darien Library. For the Hinley Homes and Royal Building Committee, our last meeting was, I want to say, January 16th. Their next one will be Wednesday, February, I want to say, 26th, if I'm looking at the numbers right. And things are moving. I don't know if anyone's had an opportunity to drive around and see all of the construction that's happening.
It's amazing, actually.
It's fun now to see it all. And I got a call from the architect today. They're looking at furniture, and it's just fun to see that, you know, they're, it's all kind of coming together. So things are moving, and things seem to be moving well. And if anyone has any questions, please let us know.
Terrific, thank you. Monica?
On January 22nd, the Great Island Advisory Committee voted to recommend to the Board of Selectmen to approve the Vision Plan, so I have copies here tonight. I'm hoping that we can discuss and vote on this at our next regular meeting. You can also see this online, but I thought it would be helpful to have a hard copy. To protect the nesting bald eagles, we have made temporary adjustments to the bridle trail. They'll be in effect from February 1st until July 15th, following the recommendations of the Department of Environmental Protection. And we've held a brand, visitors entering near the beach cottage area should turn around at the posted signs. And before reaching the closed section, there'll be some barricades up and some eagle signs that'll help you understand why you're doing this. Please note that there are no pets on the trail at all, leashed or unleashed, no pets on the trail. And our next meeting is February 13th at 7 o'clock. It'll be a Zoom meeting only. Thank you.
Marcy?
Sure. Mental Health Task Force met on January 14th. One of the biggest comeouts of that meeting was Ellie Ramsack and Paula Settcliff were trained in QPR training. QPR training is an acronym for Question, Persuade, and Refer. It's a two-hour training program. It's pretty short, so it's different from the mental health first aid training. But really, the idea is to be able to recognize somebody who is in full-on suicidal ideation and to be able to get them help immediately. So it's sort of like a quick CPR or first aid. I took it maybe three years ago, and it's a phenomenal resource to have. You can use it at any aspect in your life. You can use it in work, you can use it at schools, you can use it with kids. But it really is, when you come across somebody who's in a mental health crisis, how do you get them to help immediately? This is an amazing resource for the town. Ally and Paula will be offering this class, hopefully, monthly. Right now, their first class they're holding is on the 13th, so in two weeks. I'm not sure if there's any still availability because it's going to go quick. But it's going to be at Darien Town Hall, room 206, which I think is where we are, between at 3:30, 3:45 to 5:15. So we're trying to get it so that people could get there after work. Highly recommend everyone and anyone to take this. It's an amazing resource to have in your home and to have in your community. But you can reach out to Ally to sign up and check in the newsletters because they're going to constantly keep having this class.
Outstanding. Mike?
First, just to dovetail on your report, you know, you had some important events that you discussed today. So I had the great pleasure in your absence of covering at the Royal School for the
Thank you for doing that.
Congressman Himes's office has a program whereby schoolchildren in various elementary schools create Valentines for servicemen and women. And they take those cards made by the children at the various schools to the Veterans Hospital in West Haven. So Congressman Himes brought a couple of gentlemen from his office who have also served and answered questions from all of the kids there, third, fourth, and fifth graders. And their questioning was lively. And there was a juncture where the children figured out that there are, the military uses dogs. And then all of the questions shifted to, what kind of dogs? My dog possibly, you know, serve in the military? But it was a wonderful program, a wonderful event. It's always great to be in the schools. And Ms. Newman will be happy to know, I asked the principal how the building was going and cohabitating with the laborers and everything.
It's a lot.
And it's going spectacularly well, according to the principal. So that was a lot of fun, thank you, John. And Blaine Review Board will be meeting on the 12th.
Terrific. Well, again, thank you for doing that. I couldn't make it, but it was, it's great when we have state officials or our congressman or anybody in the legislature come to visit town. And if they're ever in town, we will welcome them with open arms. And it's great to have them coming in to see what's going on in Darien. We've got a lot to be proud of, so, okay. All right, Jennifer, any public comments?
No.
Okay. So new business. Discuss and take action on a request to accept a donation of audiovisual equipment from the Darien Foundation. Jennifer?
The Darien Foundation has very generously offered to donate a batch of audiovisual equipment to the Darien Senior Center. The estimated value is $25,504. And it includes two projectors, two screens, one ViewSonic interactive screen, microphone speakers, amplifiers, that sort of thing. Your approval is required for anything over $12,500. And this equipment will allow members to see slides better. They'll be able to do larger-scale presentations, do lunch and learns, that kind of thing. So it's really an expansion of what they're able to offer, and they can have more comprehensive virtual abilities, recording for members who maybe can't attend or are homebound. And one of the big pluses is with the new volume capability on this equipment, there's an improvement in clarity of sound, which will be very beneficial for those with hearing challenges.
Well, once again, we are in debt to the Darien Foundation for their generosity, not just in this case, but really in so many different cases in town where they've made a real difference. And please know personally how much I appreciate that, and I think I speak for everybody on the board, frankly, everybody in the leadership position in town when I say that. So thank you very much. This is terrific. Any questions for Jennifer on this?
No.
Okay, well, again, thank you very much. It's great. Could I get a motion to approve the authorization, the authorization, the acceptance of the gift to the Darien Senior Center valued at $25,504 from the Darien Foundation? Monica moves, Sarah seconds, all in favor. Again, thank you very much. That's great. Okay, next up, discuss and take action on a resolution authorizing and directing the submission of a neglected cemetery grant to the state of Connecticut. Jennifer?
Periodically, we are eligible to apply for a neglected cemetery grant. I think the last one we did was in 2023. It's a few thousand dollars, four to $5,000 this year, I think. Ed maintains a list of what he's working through. The application is due February 13th. And one of the requirements is that this board authorize the first selectman and that the first selectman be specifically named in the action to do all of the paperwork and sign off on the application.
Well, again, these are grants we appreciate. And a few things are sadder on a piece of property than on a collected cemetery. And so there's lots of folks who are motivated to help with this and having some resources to add to what we already spent on that, I think, is great. So we appreciate that. And I do see here in the resolution that's proposed, authorizing and directing the submission of a neglected cemetery grant to the state of Connecticut, and that it specifically resolves that the town Darien Board of Selectmen authorizes and directs First Selectman John Skrotzky to apply for, accept, and administer a neglected cemetery grant. Could I get a motion to approve that resolution?
I just have one question, though.
Please.
Jen, did Ed apply for this grant?
No, he maintains the list, and then I do the application.
You apply. Thank you for applying.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
No, I was just going to say.
You'll move that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, Sarah moves, second. Mike seconds, all in favor. Okay, great, thank you. All right. Next up, we need to discuss and take action on a proposed legal settlement. Mike, do you have a proposed amendment?
Yes, yes, pursuant to our discussion in executive session, as this is a pending legal matter, I move that we approve the proposed settlement of the action entitled John Niffen versus the Town of Darien, docket number 3, colon, 24, dash, CV, dash, 01489, pursuant to the recommendation of the town's litigation counsel.
Okay, anyone second? Okay, Monica seconds, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is that we need to discuss and take action on a proposed tax appeal settlement. This is with regard to a property here in town. This is number six, Ziggy's Way. And the proposed settlement is to reduce the fair market value of that property for the valuation year 2018 and for specifically the tax year 2023, and to reduce that value to $13 million. Could I have a motion to approve that? Sarah moves, Monica seconds, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Yes?
Public comment?
We did public comment, there aren't any.
She did call, and she said no.
There were.
Were there? There was?
There was someone here.
I'm sorry. There you go. Normally, we only have that online. Public comment. Happy to have you. Thank you, I appreciate that. Not frequent that we have that.
Excuse my very official sign. Like I stepped on in cars.
All right, we appreciate that. If you could give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Hannah Brady. I live at 45 Cedric Avenue, adjacent to Tilly Pond. I'm also an employee at the Darien Nature Center. So I'm here today to talk about the health of the two ponds located at both of those parks, both as a member of the community and an employee of the Nature Center. So Molly Robertson, some of you may know her. She is our program director, and she has been teaching at Cherry Lawn Park since 2013. Since her posting, she has noticed a steep decline in all forms of aquatic life, including turtles and vertebrates like damselflies and dragonflies, tadpoles, and other aquatic life. For most of the summer, there's a thick layer of duckweed and algae on the pond. There's oily surfaces, unnatural smells, and also green slime. We became so concerned about the health of the pond that we applied for and were granted, given a grant, sorry, to purchase professional water testing equipment in 2022. The testing over several months in 2022 showed that the pond had a dissolved oxygen level of 6 milligrams per liter. A healthy pond should have levels of about 10 or 11 milligrams per liter. This past summer, we tested the pond again, and the dissolved oxygen levels were below 1 milligram per liter. This is with the aerator running, but 1 milligram per liter is a state of hypoxia, and it does not support aquatic life. So while we initiate the installation of that aerator, it appears and shows that unfortunately, that pond seems so degraded so far that it's just simply not effective and not able to do what it needs to do. Though, the aerator would very much so be effective were the pond to be restored back to a healthier state. The overgrowth of the duckweed and algae is almost certainly related to fertilizer runoff, both from the sports field in Cherry Lawn and properties that are in the water way there. As the duckweed and algae decompose, they pull oxygen from the water, and that's the reason that the oxygen levels are so low in the pond. In addition to the low oxygen levels, we noticed that there was a severe pH problem after the fertilizer was applied to the soccer field. Shortly after, the pH level of the pond was between 12 and 13, which is as alkaline as bleach. I believe that this pond, and we believe that this pond will continue to degrade without intervention. So we are asking and believe that the ponds desperately need some form of dredging to return them to a healthier baseline. Animals will return, and the aerator will become effective. The dredging will restore depth to the pond and volume to the pond and help remove those nutrients that are stored in sediment of the ponds. Dredging will also reduce and eliminate the detrimental blooms that are happening and restore the pond's ecosystem, so for plants, animals, insects, and other wildlife. After dredging, reducing or eliminating the fertilizing of soccer fields would help to keep the pond healthy. I see the same troubling signs as a resident adjacent to Tilly Pond. And I urge the town to dredge both ponds to restore these treasured bodies of water and special recreational spaces for our community. Just quickly. That's my dog's footprint right there. Sorry about that.
Footprint?
Yeah.
I love that.
Right on it in the car immediately. So these are actual photos taken at Tilly Pond. So as you can see, the water is completely covered. We have the same thing here. There's fishing lines and hooks that we find regularly there that I believe that fishing is not supposed to happen in the pond. Dead fish, the oil slip on the surface, invasive plants. So there's a number of issues that are going on there. And these just demonstrate what a normal pond pH color should be. And we have this very dark blue.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. We have this very dark blue, as you can see again here. And then this would be that pH scale where we would want to be here. We are all the way at that extreme end after some sort of fertilization happens adjacent to, or at least high-level fertilization adjacent to us. As you can see, this obviously affects the quality of what kind of species and animal you'll find in the pond. Finally, and this is more of a side note, but at the bottom here, you'll see this Bill Lucy event that's happening at the library. It's related in that he's talking about the quality of the water actually on the coast of Darien. He did a study and has results that he is going to demonstrate off of the beaches in town. And these issues are obviously related because what is in the ponds, in both Tilly Pond and Cherry Lawn, ends up in our beaches. So I think anyone who has an interest in this, who would like to attend that event as well, that would be fantastic.
What day is that?
It is February 6.
February 6.
There you go, February 6 at the library. So yeah, I just wanted to say that. Do you have any questions? I'm not an expert, so.
No, we appreciate that. I think during the budget discussion for Parks and Rec, Cherry Lawn is teed up for dredging for this year.
Excellent.
And then, no, I'm sorry, Tilly Pond this year and Cherry Lawn next year.
Okay, great. We just wanted to make sure we're throwing our hat in the ring as well.
We appreciate that. But thank you. I'm sorry I missed you there for a public comment. Is there any other public comment? Okay, all right. No old business today. So we have two appointments. We interviewed two individuals for the Beautification Committee in executive session today. They are Danielle Nicole Seitz and Pamela Thompson. So could I get a motion to appoint both Pamela and Danielle to the Beautification Commission for terms ending November 30th, 2027? Mike moves, Monica seconds, all in favor? Great. Thank you, as always, not just to these folks, but to anybody who steps up to volunteer in town. We very much appreciate it. Okay. Next up is budget review. Jennifer?
If we could move down there, or at least I'm going to move down there, so I can
Let's move down to the table.
Pull up on the screen. Okay, so this is the file that I sent out to you over the weekend. Kind of just a reminder of what I presented to you on January 21st, what we're looking at right now for my proposed
Can you move over? There you go, thank you.
Yep, for my proposed budget. The Board of Selectmen is up $2.2 million, a 6.17% change. The library request is up $127,000, a 2.8% change. Debt service is up $2.5 million, 19%, for a total town budget increase of $4.8 million or 9%. What we talked about on the 21st was that investment income is, was projected to be down by 1.3 million. And so the net town budget was actually up about 15%. We went over the breakdown, but we'll go through the individual departments of what makes up that Board of Selectmen budget. And I went over with you what the significant variances are. We'll go into those with each department. But one that I did notice was tree maintenance. It's actually $21,000, not $25,000. And then on capital, we talked about the total capital request was about $20.3 million at that time. The Noront Heights retaining wall was an estimate of 1.5, but it wasn't unknown. They have refined that. It's $2 million is their request. And these four here, we would expect to be bonded because they need the bonding guidance that the Board of Finance has established. So really, what we're doing through this process is presenting to you a not-to-exceed number. Get the consensus of the board and a commitment to the project. And then, in the case of Pear Tree and Weed, go out and do the bidding, get the actual number, and then come through the regular appropriation process. The Noront Heights retaining wall is a little different. They have gone out to bid back in June, so it'll be a little bit different process. But again, getting your consensus and your commitment to the project, and then coming through the bonding resolution. And same with the fire apparatus, refining that, making sure that's the right number, but then coming through with an actual bonding resolution for the appropriation.
The reason that's important is that if we've got a sense for, not just this board, but Board of Finance and RTM, and everybody's good with that, then we can confidently go out and get the bid process and go through all of that effort to get that done. Again, we think these are not-to-exceed numbers, but that at least gives us confidence that if we get the bid, it's approved. We just need to get the final number, as opposed to spending time getting the bid and then have everyone decide, no, we don't want to do this.
All right, is the Darien Harbor dredging part of the Pear Tree? No, it is separate. It's a separate, okay. Yep, and that's, we have it in Public Works. So when we go over Public Works, I think they're tomorrow night. We'll talk about that one a little bit. The next habit in the file that you received is kind of the same thing, the breakdown up at the top, but it's building what your fiscal '26 proposed budget will be. As we work through, there's going to be changes. There's already a couple that we know about, the library. We meet with them tomorrow. They have to adjust their request based on the medical renewal estimate that I received from the State Partnership Plan. The treasurer has gone back and taken another look at her projection. Right now, she thinks it can come up $1 million based on an assumption of two rate decreases in fiscal '26 rather than the four that she was initially projecting back in the fall. And the registrar's office has gotten word that they are going to get a faster tabulator, so a slight increase in their professional services, but a slight decrease in their temporary pay. So those are the ones that we know about. As we settle on others, we'll add them here, and we'll be able to see a running total of your Board of Selectmen proposed budget. So our very first can't fit it on the screen a little better. Our very first group is the fire departments. Their total expenditures are up $310,000, which is a 15.5% increase. What I'd like to do as we go through these is we'll do all of the operating, and then we'll go through the capital for each of the departments. What's really making up that increase is these two yellow ones, the Fire Commission and Fire Marshal. Those both have new positions requested. So we will get to those in a second. I just want to make sure that that stays put, but I don't think it's going to. But just working down the list, the Darien Fire Department has a 15% increase, but it's really bringing them up to the same level of funding that we give to the other departments. They're actually still a little bit lower. Historically, they've been quite a bit lower. The others were around $220,000, $230,000 in fiscal '25. Darien Fire Department was at about $188,000. What they're really seeing an increase in is their facility repair and maintenance. Historically, it's been very high, and we've been budgeting below that. So they're requesting to bring that up to $43,000. They spent $55 in fiscal '24, $37,000 in fiscal '23, but they only have $32,000 budgeted in fiscal '25. They've been holding back on some other expenditures in their department in order to stay within their overall budget, but cover their increased facility expenses. So they're looking to budget at their historical need. And then telecommunications, we haven't historically reimbursed them for certain telecommunications expenses that we do reimburse the other departments for. So we're looking to start reimbursing them for that in fiscal '26. And then
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the turnout gear that's involved in that, was there not a schedule that was produced? Is this according to the schedule? Does this match the schedule that was put together originally?
Yes, in the individual departments, the turnout gear that they purchased, yes.
Okay.
The Noront Fire Department is up 11, about $12,000, it's 5%. The main thing here is they moved in fiscal '24 to a gas meter subscription instead of a capital purchase. And it just allows them to kind of stay on top of the newest, greatest, latest and greatest gas meters. That's a big part of their increase. Noront Heights has a very minimal increase. They are, they're seeing an increase in their facility repair and maintenance, just like everybody else. They're up $4,000 there, but it's offset by some decreases in some of their other accounts. So now the Fire Commission. The request here is up about $180,000. And the majority of that is a request for a new position for, for lack of a better title, a fire administrator. And what we're looking at here, there was something proposed a couple of years ago that was more of a oversight, overseeing the departments. This is not intended to be that type of position. This is somebody to coordinate This is somebody to coordinate on the administrative work with the departments and the town and serve as a liaison. There's a lot of purchasing requirements, writing bids and bid specs, entering POs, submitting invoices for payment. There's a lot of reporting requirements that didn't exist before, reporting to the state, reporting for insurance, that if we can do all these things, we may be able to save some money by more cooperative purchasing or better reporting to the insurance companies and save on some insurance rates. So that's what this position is intended to do, is assist the volunteer fire departments with all of the administrative burden that now exists.
Was this role mentioned in that report? Was it last year or the year before that came out?
Yeah, so.
2023 or 24?
It's been two or three years now, but there was an emergency services study.
Right, it was huge.
That was done that covered a lot of this, and I should sit around the spreadsheet on that. Where we've evolved is just like Jennifer said, that report came out and said that we would have a position that would essentially coordinate and oversee these departments.
Right.
Our sense is that if we back up to kind of the central question, which is what problem are we trying to solve? What we found in going through all this is that a lot of the problems are exactly what Jennifer talked about, which is coordination of payments, everybody buying gear consistently, purchase orders completed, training that's completed, actually codified in the report so we can send it to an insurance company and get a premium discount as a result of submitting that report, which we're not doing consistently now. And by the way, not just for the three departments, there's also fire commission administration that is not being done currently. And so the idea is have a person there that we would collaborate with the fire commission on to write the job spec, to make sure all those things get really pulled out of the fire departments and just administered by this one person who would work for the town but would be managed and overseen by all three departments and really mainly the commission itself.
Who would this person report to?
So this would be a town employee, and they report to Jennifer as the town administrator.
Okay.
But as a practical matter, what we really want is this person to be embedded with the commission.
Right.
And the departments, and become one with them, and work with them, and cooperate and collaborate with them. I think that's going to be a more effective model than just having someone work directly for Jennifer, sitting in the fire commission. The person would be on the town payroll and would ultimately report into the town infrastructure, but as a practical matter and a day-to-day matter, we would have them be someone who collaborates and works directly with the departments and the commission.
Do we know what the full cost of the salary would be with benefits and everything?
It is attached in Open Gov, but.
Okay. I'm in that now, and I'm just trying to under, I don't see.
Yeah, well, she's getting that. I mean, it's a new position.
Yeah, it's about just under $150,000 with all the benefits. Who's currently taking care of all those roles and jobs right now?
None.
No one's doing it.
Volunteers, the chiefs are doing it part-time. It's not, none of this is done in a consistent way. It's not saying it's being done bad. I mean, it's just that if you think about the highest and best use of the time of the chiefs and the folks that they work with, it's not doing stuff like this. So the real purpose of that is to gather all that up, and not only to get it done consistently with one person, but also provides one person for Jennifer to work with and says, okay, I've got a question on any report, any number, any budget, the fire vehicle replacement schedule, what's the status of the bid on this particular truck, why does it have these specs? There's a single person to call.
Well, and the standardization would help.
Yeah.
Because we don't have that right now.
Yeah, this person would also prepare and help manage the fire commission meetings, which right now are not like other boards and commissions. I'm working with the commission right now to reset that, where they would become like all of our regular boards and commissions. This person would be the liaison that actually prepares the materials, agendas, minutes, all of that for fire commission meetings. So we're changing and fixing a lot of stuff, having this person become part of the fabric of our fire to services here, I think, helps them preserve their autonomy and how they do things with somebody that they work with directly to help them. It also helps us from a financial standpoint and administrative standpoint, and helps generally for us to advance the fire commission to kind of the next stage in its existence. So I know we don't like to add personnel, but I think in this case, as Jennifer says, I think we'll save some money on things like insurance premiums, consistent buying, buying from the same vendors, multiple bids for different products. I think this person is going to save us some money. Whether it's the full salary, I don't know, but there's no doubt it's not zero.
So will this person have control of all purchase orders that go through the, any sort of fire purchasing?
To be determined. I want to work through the job spec with the commission, but as a headline, yeah.
He's the buyer.
Yeah, more of that, the better. I also just want to say to the fire commission and anybody else who's watching, I really appreciate the collaboration with that group. They've got a lot of good ideas for this, and we're working on the job spec right now, and it'll take a little time to iterate. I want to make sure all departments have a chance to have their say. Sean here is the fire commissioner chair, and he's here, but I appreciate the collaboration on this. I think we're going to get to a good commission and department solution that helps the town and helps Jennifer.
I think, you know, we've talked about this a little bit, but you know, we just heard tonight that we're increasing Darien's budget because of the discrepancy on communication and cell phone and whatever else. And I think that an administrator would have caught that. I also think, I was just looking through the cap budget, and one house is doing HVAC, and one house is doing a new roof, and another house has it scheduled for the, you know, in the six-year cap, and two others don't. I mean, I think that things like that, like having, having one set of eyes on all three will help our volunteers do a better, a great job. I don't think they can do a better job. They'll continue to do a great job, but I think another set of eyes will, will help. And I just hope that we have a way to determine how much money we are saving, because I'm convinced we will save money.
Okay. One thing I also, I didn't mention is, right now, because the chief and the treasurer are main points of contact for that information, they turn over every so often. We've been very fortunate to have very responsive, professional, excellent chiefs and treasurers, but every couple of years, it's somebody who's now new to the process. This would be consistent, you know, longer term, and have that, develop that knowledge of what our administrative processes are. And so they know that, and they can work with the chiefs to get them up to speed on the part that they need to do, but the bulk of it will be a longer-term, consistent presence.
Jen, where will they work? Where's the office going to be?
Not entirely determined yet. There, there's the possibility, there's some reconfiguring that's going to be needed in the fire marshal's office. When we get to that, we'll talk about their need for new positions and what that could mean. There's, you know, it's to be determined, but more often than not, I really see them spending time at the departments.
Okay.
And maybe we can work with the departments to find some shared space there.
That's an important point to make. I think one key difference between what the study recommended and what we're doing here, the study recommended sort of a fire coordinator that was going to oversee the departments, work in town hall, kind of that type of role. This is completely different. I mean, everybody reports to Jennifer, we're never going to change that, that is a general matter. But this person really is, is working for the fire commission, right, and is overseen by the fire commission. They spend their time with the fire, they help the fire commission manage all this stuff and for the three departments. And so frankly, spending a lot of time at the individual departments is something I really envision. I don't know that you really want them housed here. I mean, we've got to figure that out, but as a general matter, they should be with the commission and with the departments, not sitting in town hall.
Is this person going to need a vehicle?
At least far my mind have some vehicles that they're rolling off. We can, we've done that before.
We, we have lots of hand-me-down vehicles. I don't know.
Okay.
Mr. Davis?
So back a while, I believe that the, the idea of when we're supposed to order fire engines went back to the commission, and they're controlling that. Would this person be also working on that? Because, you know, we just, Sean and I were just talking, and I mentioned last year, you know, if it's taking three to four years to get a fire engine once we put an order in, would they be responsible so that we're starting to work on some of those things earlier, so we aren't getting them when, when the other one is really supposed to be at a commission?
Let me describe the flavor. It's a very good question. In terms of responsibility for the fire apparatus schedule, the criteria that's used to determine when a vehicle needs to be replaced, the sequencing in terms of ordering, multiple years go by, and then it's ready and all that, I actually would look to Sean and the commission to oversee that intellectually, and have ownership for that process, coordinate amongst the three departments. And at some point, it's actually the commission that comes and presents that to the Board of Selectmen. The admin resource that takes that direction manages the schedule, makes sure everything is sequenced right, updates this so that that makes sense. We've got the latest bid number, here's that number, so that if you were to call and say, could I get a copy of that report to see what the latest decision-making, right, it's available, and the administrator sends that to you. But I wouldn't see this person being the intellectual owner of the apparatus replacement schedule. That's really the commission that's going to do that. They'll, they'll work together, but those are the two roles.
Okay, I just, my point is always, you know, because I understand what a good job the fire departments doing, calculating, doing the refund, they're actually building a fire engine. But if it's now, the point that I raised again last year, was if it's taking us three years, in the past, we were doing three years, how do we make sure that we're sort of moving those?
Well, so funny you bring that up. We had a commission meeting the other night, and I talked about that with, with Sean. So what they're going to do is, we're going to have as part of the schedule, sort of, here's the decision point where we would replace, decide to replace the vehicle. Here's when we want to order, given the lead time, so we lock in this price. Here's when we expect it to be ready, when we'd need an appropriation, because there are COD trucks, right? So the new schedule is actually going to reflect that type of thinking, so you'll have sort of the criteria for determining when, what drives the replacement, when you'd want to order it, about how long it's going to take, and when you'd need the appropriation, so that we may have stuff that's actually on order that you might have to appropriate next year and, and bond at some point, or two years from now. But the schedule would lay all that out, and the commission's going to take this whole time.
That's what I was just, that would move.
Not, we're not ready for that, but that's, that'll, that'll come in a few months. Other questions on that? Okay, sorry.
The other large change is in their training budget. It's up a total of $9,000, but that's being driven by flashover training, which they have to do every three years, and in fiscal '26, it's going to be $12,000. Without that, they actually would have been down a little bit in their training account. And then the fire marshal's office, also a request for a new position. The fire marshal's office is looking for an additional deputy fire marshal. I had the discussion with the fire marshal, and he feels that we could fund it for half a year. This is to address all of the ongoing inspection work, not just construction-related inspection work, but ongoing inspections that they have related to new development, multi-unit properties, multi-unit dwellings they have to inspect every year. And in Open Gov, there is an attachment that goes through what their needs are. So they actually go through all of their inspection activities required for the 7-124 year, the average time of inspection, total time, rolling that forward to 7-125 with new properties coming on. And then they do also anticipate requesting another deputy fire marshal in fiscal '27. So all of this, they go through all their different types of inspections, but in the 7-125 fiscal year, they're anticipating 161 new units coming on. And when we look at what their total time is to do all of these annually required inspections, with the third deputy fire marshal that they're requesting, they have 7,360 hours available to meet all of those inspections. They need just under 8,500, which actually leaves them a little bit of a shortfall of about 1,100 hours. When we roll forward, if they get the position in fiscal '27, they only have 100 hours shortfall. And there's assumptions in there of how much vacation sick holiday time people take. One thing with this requested position is emergency management for the last couple of years has been requesting a paid, part-time deputy emergency management director. I am not recommending funding that because through the fire marshal's office, the fire marshal thinks that he can dedicate 20% of this new deputy fire marshal to emergency management. And the discussions between the emergency management director, who's also the assistant fire marshal, and the fire marshal, that would work for backing up the EMD duties. So we get a couple of functions out of a new deputy fire marshal.
Can I ask a dumb question?
Go.
When we agree to have these new developments, do we ask for funds? Are we, are we figuring out that we have these costs that we take on now?
So keep, keep in mind that the new developments, as they come online, so those properties exist now, and they take a sliver of the pie of total tax liability in the town. And when those properties come online, they take a bigger slice of that pie, which for the incremental costs that they might impose on us through not just inspections, but police protection and all that stuff, right? The good news is that the fact that those properties are worth a lot more means that the incremental tax burden on everybody else is a little bit less. So the answer to your question is indirectly, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so if you look through it, just emphasize what Jennifer said, it's, it's not just the new construction, but it's the ongoing or enduring inspection requirements, if I have that right, that once this stuff is in, that was not the last fire inspection that we're doing. And so what's happening is that every completed property is resulting in a greater load of annual inspections, even if there's no additional construction. And so this takes into account the, frankly, denser commercial development that requires these ongoing inspections.
John?
Go.
If I'm mistaken, when they do, there's a payment that they make to the town for the initial fire inspection, but we do not get revenue on an ongoing basis thereafter, is that right?
Is that right, Bobby?
Correct.
Okay.
Couple other things going on in the fire marshal's office. So the cost for that for a half a year, the salary portion of it is about $44,000. It is a union position, so it's driven by the union salary schedule, which a full year would be about $88,000.
And Jen, that's all in?
Uh, no, that's just the salary portion. Let me all in. About $144,000 for a full year salary and full year of benefits. A couple other things coming, going on in their budget. Standby pay is a new requirement. It's going to cost us about $5,500 a year. That is $15 per day. It's a new provision in the town hall union contract that was approved a few months ago. And then they have about $15,000 increase in their software maintenance and support. They're implementing new software that they purchased in fiscal '24. They're finishing up the implementation, and it does come with a more expensive maintenance and support.
What is a standby pay? What is that?
For someone on, on pulse status, $15 a day.
Oh.
And that occurs now in the fire marshal's office and the building department for building inspectors. They have to respond to a lot of things.
Okay.
Off-hours.
Got it, got it.
So it's not for the entire union, it's just the fire marshal in the building.
Got it.
And then hydrants and water mains, we're assuming a $48,000 increase, but we actually, in the next couple of months, will get our letter from the water company letting us know what the rates will be, but we have made an assumption about an increase there.
What are the rates over the past several years? I mean, we've been going up and up and up and up.
We've, we've actually held a kind of steady. In fiscal '22, we spent $493.
Okay.
Then 509, 504. We have 508 budgeted. I think we're tracking pretty well on that.
Pretty close, yeah.
But I think, you know, at some point, PIRA is going to approve an increase.
Yeah, and their, their increase letter is calendar year-based, so it should be coming very soon for calendar '25.
Right, but then we don't know what the second half of fiscal '26 will be.
This is all a quarian driven in terms of the cost of this?
Yes.
You have contracts with them, so this is one of the things I was worried about with this acquisition by RWA. We could be just getting started on these increases.
We pay a lot in our budget.
Yep. Good news on the revenue front, the fire marshal's office is projecting an additional $30,000 of revenue, and this is for, they have to go in and do inspections when new retail spaces fit out their new their new space, when a new tenant's coming in. So with all the redevelopment, not only is the construction inspection, but the Fire Marshal's Office has some later in the process inspections with the fit outs. Any other questions on operating?
All right.
Jen, I had, on the fire, each house has $10,000 for grant, what is that?
That is kind of a discretionary thing for them. Several years ago, when we moved, we used to give them huge grants. Then we moved to us paying a lot of their bills on their behalf and they had a $5,000 grant. The departments came to us, this was several years ago, and said it wasn't enough. It's things that they might want to do for their membership. They did lengthy training and they wanted to have pizza, or they can use it any way they want. But it's been at $10,000 at least, I would say, the last five years.
Yeah, we did that on Board of Finance, I remember that.
Yeah, if not longer. It was, I think it was at $5,000 for one or two years and then it went up to $10,000.
I think having a fire administrator to actually say, to be at a department, say, what are they spending, come back to us and say, this is how we're doing this and how you can do it equitably across all three departments. We just don't have that visibility. So it's been uncertainty, it's been uncertainty for years in terms of exactly how to think about that. So that's another benefit of this position.
All right, on capital. Darien Fire Department, they have an annual $5,000 of small capital. They are asking for $30,000 for truck radio systems. Their current systems are more than 20 years old. The useful lifespan is really about 15, so they're well beyond that. The models they use are discontinued, they've seen component failures, and the fear is a jeopardization of operational readiness if the radios aren't working properly. So this would replace current radios on all of the DFD trucks.
How many is that?
How many is that, Brian? Do you know offhand?
It's going to be three radios because they're going to have theirs.
Or like $10,000 each?
Yeah. They are requesting $150,000 for a boiler replacement. Their current boiler is 20-plus years old and was actually acquired secondhand at that point. So they're seeing an increase in maintenance costs and a decrease in reliability. They are looking to go with a commercial boiler that is appropriate for their building size and expect to have some efficiency and efficiency gains and certainly more reliability and proper heating of the department as well as the garage, which will help us properly maintain the trucks. They are requesting an additional turnout gear dryer. They have one. It can do three sets of gear, but washing takes about 30 minutes, but because they can't use a conventional dryer and use heat because it would shrink the material, drying takes much longer. So if they do three sets of gear at one time, they're waiting a long time to be able to do another round. So this would double their drying capacity. And then finally, they are looking for a roof replacement. The current roof is over 25 years old and they've encountered numerous leaks and issues in the last two years. They've been trying to address that through maintenance, but it is time for a replacement. And this quote is based on quotes they received in October 2024, but they did factor in a 30% adjustment in case the actual costs come in higher than quoted, because it's a roof and you never know what you're going to find when you're up there.
So Jen, I'm not, totally not an engineer, but the HVAC in '28, I think, should you be doing those both at the same time? Or do we just not need to do the HVAC? There's nothing wrong with it, that's just like end of life or?
Is your HVAC rooftop units?
Yeah.
Is there any benefit to replacing those at the same time, or are they easily taken down?
There is, we're just trying not to do everything at once. We've got to split it up.
We'll look into what economies we might find if we did both of those at the same time.
You're talking the roof and the HVAC?
Mm-hmm.
That's what you're asking?
That's a great question.
Yeah, if you're going to take them off and put them back on.
See, Monica, you're just about around an engineer.
So efficient.
All right, any other questions on TFT Capital?
Nope.
Chad, can I ask a real quick question? So Jen, if I recall, when we set up the small tax $5,000 for all three of them, so we didn't have to do certain tracking, is that being set up that what's not spent is being moved into contingency and they get a new $5,000?
Yes, when we close out with Board of Finance.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure. So that gets moved into our contingency there?
And then they get the fresh $5,000 each year.
Perfect, thank you.
So Narroton Fire Department, they are requesting $6,450 for replacement of water rescue suits. They, they're doing, they're looking to replace four. This is the second phase of a two-phase project in an attempt to get on a regular replacement cycle. They have tried doing repairs, but they've found that they're often short-lived and ineffective. And the water rescue suits are really important because this is the department that has the vote and they respond to a lot of water emergencies. So they get a lot of use. We actually have 11 total and they're looking to replace four. They are looking to replace apparatus tires, $5,500. They're at the end of the recommended useful life per NFPA standards. Those have a seven-year recommendation. $5,000 for small capital. $50,000 to clean and paint their truck room, which has not been done since 1984. Paint's peeling, but even more important, there's diesel particulate matter and stains from the exhaust of the apparatus that's built up over time. So they're looking to clean that up and give it a new paint job.
Don't we normally wait 50 years and not 40 years?
I know. Really pushing it. And then their last request is $23,000 to replace three thermal imaging cameras, one of which has failed completely, two are from 2011, one from 2015. And the ones that we're replacing are very old technology, so these would be much newer technology that will replace the outdated ones. These are much easier to carry around, they're not nearly as bulky, and will just be a big benefit.
Is that the only department that has those or?
No, I think every department has thermal imaging cameras. This is the only one that's looking for replacements this year. There have been replacements here and there throughout the last few years among the other departments.
How many are there in that? Sorry.
Three total, I believe. I think I read it here. Three, three total in NFDC?
Yeah, there was three.
Yeah.
This year.
And that's how many the department has total, or do you have more than three?
No, there are, I want to say six.
Okay.
Six at that department. How many do they have in the whole town?
That I don't know, but I can certainly find out. They have $5,000 for small capital. $70,000 for airbag replacement. These are the airbags that they use for lifting vehicles. If someone was stuck under construction equipment, it lifts up the construction equipment. The current ones they have are 15 years old, I believe, and that's the end of their use, they're approaching the end of their useful life, which is 15 years. And they do rescues on 95 and need to replace these. They are replacing all of the ones that they have because they were all acquired at the same time.
And again, are they the only department that has this?
I don't believe so, but I will find out for you. And I'll find out how many we have. They are requesting $150,000 for an initial consultant view of a renovation and a volunteer live-in facility. Part of this is to address recruitment and retention of volunteers. They are finding it's very difficult to get volunteers. A lot of the ones who are in the age band that they really would love to recruit and retain can't afford to live here. They may have been volunteers when they were living at home. They're kind of too old to live at home or don't want to live at home, but they can't afford to live locally. And so they're having, they're encountering some problems with recruitment and retention. In addition, they're looking to look, increase some storage and office space, and they want to make sure that, kind of similar to the exhaust issue where things have built up over time, they want to go through their entire department, their entire building, and make sure there's no health or safety concerns related to either exhaust or some other health and safety code regulations. So they're looking to have a consultant come in and look at the viability of a volunteer housing facility of some sort, as well as the health and safety concerns. They have tried, they converted a space into a small shared bunk room, but they're looking for more living quarters than just temporary, you know, stay overnight because there was a long haul kind of thing.
Is the 150 an estimate for work done? Is it a, for a?
For a consultant, and I believe it'll get us through to a plan.
Got it, so the 150 is the plan, the actual work could be?
Right, so what they have as a placeholder is $3 million in '26, '27, but that is absolutely a guess at this point, and that number would actually be informed by what comes out of this $150,000.
And where is that facility going to be located?
To be determined.
And how many people are they looking to house? Is it two? Is it eight?
Yeah, just by comparison, so the Narroton Fire Department has done something similar. So they bought a house that's not right next door on Dickinson, but just the next house that's over. And that house is currently set up to have four volunteers. And these are people that are, as Jennifer said, too young to live at home, but not enough horsepower to live in town. And so you've got this sort of perfect age range, you know, adults fully qualified and at Narroton, I mean, they're literally right there, so the response time is.
Right.
Which if you think about just this notion of workforce housing, this is a flavor of that, that actually could be very helpful to us as a long-term solution for having something where we can house and have volunteers in town to play that important role, allows them to have other jobs during the day. And that's what my understanding is, the kids at the Narroton Fire Department, they have remote jobs, so they're kind of there all the time. And so this really is an experiment to say, could we create something that would provide housing for these types of folks, recognizing that the trade-off would be, well, if we start running out of volunteers, we've got to go to a paid fire staff. So my look at the economics for this suggests that this is an experiment worth running. Good news is that even if it's off-site housing like that, I mean, you can unwind this, just like the house of the Narroton Fire Department.
But the house of the Narroton Fire Department is owned by the Narroton Fire Department.
Yeah, so that's another point on all this, is I think the Narroton, they did some fundraising and all that.
Right.
We would definitely want, I can envision, for example, something like this to be very attractive as something to do fundraising for in the town of Darien, to try to create this housing to support our volunteer fire department. So I'd be very surprised if, for example, we ended up funding $3 million to do all that.
Right, because we don't own any of the properties, right? Of any of the departments.
Correct.
So more to come on this. I think it's worthwhile to spend the money on the study. That'll inform a lot about this, but that also provides the basis for coming up with something that we could come around as a town and do fundraising for. I'd be very surprised if we couldn't raise the bulk of this money through an effort like that.
Well, I don't know. I think this, you know, I think it, where do you stop? Right? We have workforce housing that, you know, lots of people in town will benefit from this. So how has, how's the Heights project gone so far?
The Narrotons?
Yeah.
I believe they have three living there.
Three of the four spots that are there now.
Yeah, they say it's working out very well.
Any update on that, Bobby? It's just those three, right, that you just?
Probably three, yes, and it's been working very well. Two of the individual sets that work from home, maybe still there, right next to the firehouse, almost all day long every day.
So what's the benefit of a study when we already have a live example?
Well, their situation is going to be different. How do we create housing for Narroton Heights versus where NFDC was able to just acquire an existing property? I think that would be one question of the study. Is there an existing property nearby that would fit the bill, or do they need to construct I think, once that is answered, we have a better idea of what that number's going to be. And I think it does come down to, when that question's answered, does the town want to acquire a property? Yes, maybe yes, maybe no. Is the town willing to build onto a building that we do not own is a different question. So this will go through what are the options to provide housing for volunteers? And when we went through the budget, when John and I met with the department, it was made very clear that we were supportive of this study, but that does not guarantee that we're supportive of what comes out of the study. But we're very interested to explore what the options are for this.
Well, then I would think you would include Darien in this.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
I mean, if you're going to do it for two houses, you should do it for all three. Right?
Not unfair, that's fair. I mean, I think just the, this broader notion of what could we do to create volunteer housing for all three departments, even though Narroton's got some now, maybe there's an answer that suggests.
I mean, we're budgeting per position to manage all of this, so I think we should be looking at all of this.
And then I would take a look at our tax abatement structure, and perhaps that's, you know, a less onerous way to.
Agreed.
Attack this.
The structure that we're using now, where we have the three individuals, that's an owned structure or is that?
Yeah.
Or rented?
Narroton.
Well, certainly one thing to look at, perhaps with the $150,000, I mean, I'm very cognizant of the additions and repurposing that we've done at the Police Department have gone so extraordinarily well, and I say that tongue in cheek, to make sure when we look at improving these, you know, structures to accommodate some housing, that we really look at whether from a systems point of view, if we're not going to be looking at the same sort of thing, if all of a sudden you add bunk space or you add a part of a floor or a half a floor, are we going to be looking at in a couple of years, oh, well, you know, now the HVACs don't mesh or the plumbing is different and we run into all those sort of same problems again.
Yeah, I think the thing that sets this particular housing aside, makes it unique, I think, is that it's really meant as something to help volunteers as opposed to paid town staff or staff that works for the Board of Education. I think to Monica's point, if we were to start to go down that path with any degree of aggressiveness, that that literally has, there's no limit to the amount of expenditure you'd have to do for something like that.
100%.
Yep, that's a problem.
Yes.
I'm not saying we could never consider it, but that's a step I'm personally not willing to be supportive of right now. But this is something I think that is worthwhile considering, partly because a lot of the funding from that could in fact come from fundraising, whereas if it worked for the town or the Board of Ed, that doesn't lend itself to that. So there's just something that feels like a philanthropic destination for something like this that could be helpful.
I, yeah, I'm looking forward to a position of helping to manage all of this. I think we have not done the holistic view of what we found and what we don't find, particularly with these huge expenses coming up, like that retaining wall has to get done.
No doubt.
Well, part of that study also be looking at whether or not, building on what Monica said, if we, you know, we have some new apartments that are coming up and some may be here, that potentially we can rent a block of apartments that's already there and maybe give a tax abatement back to the owner to have the rent be reasonable to the town, but still provide service to the volunteers that are working at the Fire Department. I mean, as long as the study's also looking. I mean, as long as the study's also looking at that, I think it would be worthwhile.
There are thousands of them.
Duly noted. Other questions?
I support the retaining wall. We have to do that. We've been putting that off.
I'm not strong enough to support the retaining wall. I actually need someone to do some engineering.
I hear what I said now, and I, I hear the laugh, but I am in favor of the retaining wall.
Given the fact that we need to, we have put that offer in.
We have. So they, what I sent to you today includes an engineer's report. It's crumbling. This is the wall on the left side of the department. They've put up some supports that are holding it for now, but it needs to get done. So they provided, on what I sent out to you today, a breakdown of the base bid and some alternates that they're looking to accept from the bid. And it comes out to $2 million. But they originally bid it in June of 2024. They had one bidder. They think that the bidder would be willing to hold the price. If they are willing to hold the price, we don't need to rebid it. If they're not willing to hold the price, we have to rebid it.
And, and it's only for a partial wall replacement, correct?
I believe so, I guess.
So, so Jen, what was, was it, we had a million and a half yesterday, and now it's two. The half a million, where'd that, where'd that?
So the, the base bid is 1.4, and that's where I was pulling the one, the 1.5 million from. But they are looking to, there were three alternates, add alts in the bid. They do want to accept two of them, based on the engineer's recommendation. So that's about $300,000. They are, they want to add in $155,000 for construction administration, which I think is really important. They spoke with the building department, and there will be special inspections required, so they're including $65,000 for that. And then the other $30,000 is some small fees, closeout engineering, and a contingency.
So when they, so when they get this bid back, does anyone in town, other than the, does Ed take a look at it?
The bid was reviewed by their engineer that they're working with, and the amount was developed by working closely with the contracted engineer who developed a replacement plan. The replacement plan was reviewed by the director of DPW and then subsequently put out to bid. So I don't think DPW reviewed the bid, but their engineer did review the bid.
It's a big number.
Yeah. Yes, it is.
It is. I feel like it grew a million bucks, too.
I think, yeah, I think the initial estimate was.
Was a million dollars.
A million dollars that they had out there.
You should have done it then.
I thought we did?
No.
We, we said no?
We did not.
Okay.
We were looking at a plan.
We were looking at the plan.
Am I wrong?
Did it just take that long to get bids?
It took a, a long time. So they, like I said, they bid it once, I think they may have bid it twice. I think the first time, they either had no responses, or the response that they got wasn't satisfactory. It was, this bid is based off a bid they received in June 2024, but it has taken a considerable amount of time for their engineer to go through it and make sure that the bid was really acceptable. And again, this, I think, comes back to our conversation about the fire administrator position, where these are volunteers who are doing this in addition to their full-time job.
Yep.
So things take longer than they otherwise would.
Is there any need to accelerate this, so that we can get this done before?
The bid expires?
This is not going to get improved until June.
Yes. I would recommend that if there's consensus that you want to do this, that we create a bonding request, because at $2 million, you know, I think we would propose it to the Board of Finance as bonding, but we can start moving that through the process because I think.
I don't think it's going to get any cheaper.
So this kind of falls outside the approval process. We'd have to accelerate that, is that right?
Don't look at me.
You wrote it.
We're all sitting here, don't. This is not falling on me, my friends. Nope, next try.
John, this has to be discussed another budget time.
Agreed.
Because the price was different.
It keeps changing, yes.
Yeah, so that acceleration, I mean, you know, if you guys approve it, it can go here to the Board of Finance as quickly as you wanted, and we can do it in March in the RTM.
Okay. That probably is enough time to get the bid.
Yeah, and, and like I said, they're, they were reaching out to the contractor to see if the contractor will hold the bid price. And if, if so, then we don't need to rebid. If the contractor says no, they want to change it, then we need to rebid.
Then it's next year. Then it's June, if we're rebidding.
Can you find out if they would hold the bid to RTM date plus 10 days? And just make sure that if it works, that they'd hold the bid through that, that'd be great.
We've been looking at this for a while.
Oh, yeah.
And the wall's getting in worse shape.
Okay. What's next?
Fire commission.
One second. It's a lot easier when it was two of us.
Fire commission. So first thing they have on here is a replacement of engine 41 at 1.5 million dollars. They have updated their estimates. You know, we, we've had some surprise numbers come at us, but this number is in line with where recent engine prices have come in. It's higher than recent engines, so we think that it's probably pretty reasonable. What they are requesting for regular projects, the drill ground training classroom at $300,000. This was actually a concept that was approved to be funded through ARPA, and they looked at the portable classroom. That didn't work. I think it may have fallen apart.
Yes, they fell apart. Yeah, goodbye.
But then they also, they also took a look at the idea of a portable classroom, and something like that just doesn't fit their needs. So they're looking for a 40 by 60 building, 30 by 40 for class space, plus some additional storage, garage area. Particularly, they want to be able to store their car fire system, so it's protected and lasts longer. But they have been working on ideas for this for quite a while, all the way through ARPA. It just didn't come to fruition. So we swept their ARPA funds to other projects and said that we would look at this through regular capital in fiscal '26.
Hey Jen, a quick question on that. Is there any revenue generation from that? Do they give classes?
Very little. They, they can do classes, but it wouldn't be a substantial amount of revenue.
Do we have the replacement schedule for the engines somewhere?
We do, and I don't think that I.
This is where I like the administration of this. I would have a holistic view of the engines.
Just keep in mind that the commission is going to take charge of the schedule.
Yeah.
And this whole process, the checklist for determining where all that is going to get refreshed over the next two or three months. So this replacement here still comes off the current schedule, but I think, based on my conversations, in the next few months, you'll see a significantly refreshed process, and you'll have a lot more visibility into the why around any particular replacement.
No, I think it's just a why, we'd also have to look at the numbers and see what's coming down the pike.
Yep.
I mean, there was one year that we had, like, three or four engines come in, and it was millions.
Well, you can see it's.
Yeah, you can see the schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah, the last one in their six years in fiscal '29, they don't have anything slated for '30, '31, or '32.
There's lots of time.
So Jen, those, those, all the engines, those are just considered priority one, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Cleaning rotation turnout gear, this is 30, a $39,000 request for the second round of turnout gear. We funded 21 sets in fiscal '25. This is for an additional nine. And this is for compliance with the state act for firefighter cancer relief is what it's really geared for. So gear washing is now required at least once every six months, and any, after any confirmed exposure, so live training and calls at a minimum. So what they were looking to do is get 30 sets of gear, so that each department would have 10 spare sets for when any are out being cleaned. And like I said, we funded 21 last year, and this is the last nine that they're looking to do this year. Or I should say, we funded 21 this year, they're looking to do nine next year. And then their last request, this has been hanging around for a while, is to extend the concrete pad up at the drill area. The current one is, it's too small, and when they do car fire drills, they actually sometimes have to be off of the concrete pad, and it damages the asphalt. So they are looking to replace the existing pad and expand it to a more adequate size.
How many years has that been budget request?
I can go back and look, but it's been quite a few.
Yeah, I, yeah. We've pulled this from their budget many times.
So on the one hand, we're buying more turnout gear, so it's more available if it's dirty or if it's been exposed. And then we're also buying super dryers to then have, be able to clean more of them quickly? Do we need to do both?
I can confirm, but I believe it's different levels of cleaning. What the department can do at their own, with their own washing machine, it probably doesn't meet.
Okay.
The standards, but I will confirm that.
Okay.
Is the concrete pad in the training classroom in the same area?
It is, but we did ask them if there needs to be any sequencing of when that work is done. They are, they're not close enough that one would impact the other.
Okay.
So if they put down the, the concrete pad, and then they do the classroom afterwards, they wouldn't be damaging the pad or anything like that.
Okay.
Concrete's not going to get any cheaper.
I've had a chance to hear the commission's proposal in detail on the classroom that's going to solve a lot of problems and create a much better space for all that. It's a very good idea.
And then, last one for the fire departments is fire marshal capital. There's a vehicle replacement request. It's a truck and a trailer. For the most part, we've kind of done hand-me-down vehicles for vehicle replacements for the departments. The fire marshal's office is the exception, because they have kind of more specialty equipment and everything that they need to accommodate. So this would be replacing a 2016 former hand-me-down police patrol vehicle and a 2004 enclosed trailer, along with mobile and portable radios. So the current vehicle is showing wear and tear, and the mechanic has recommended replacement. It will be assigned to a full-time staff member, and it will carry 75% of the equipment used for investigations. The other thing that they are requesting is turnout gear for the fire marshal's office, for members of the fire marshal's office. So $6,000 for that.
Who uses the vehicle?
A, a member of the fire marshal's office, so one of, either, depending on how they allocate their vehicles, the fire marshal, assistant fire marshal, or one of the full-time deputy fire marshals.
So does this answer the question earlier about?
Do they need a car?
A car for the part-time person?
I don't think the one that we'll be getting rid of is one we would want anyone driving.
All right. I, I ask this all the time. Is there any resale to the stuff we're getting rid of?
My kid needs a car.
And is it?
So this assumes no resale, but we do always, anytime a vehicle is no longer of use to us, and we're going to dispose of it, the public works department evaluates if it should go to auction, or if there's some other disposal method. Lately, we've been getting pretty good returns at auction. And so that would come into the capital non-recurring fund as a sale of assets revenue. So we would still, it wouldn't have any trade value, I'm sure, for, for this, so we would still pay the full cost for this, but we would get something back if it's auctioned.
I'd love to know what that is.
We can absolutely report back to you. We actually, we have a list of stuff that's going to auction soon. So when we get the results back, I can share with you what we auctioned and what kind of prices we got.
Okay.
But that's all for fire. And next up is park and rec. This is our, second of our two large departments, or large sections tonight. Park and Rec operating, their budget is up about $156,000, which is an 8.7% increase on the expenditure side. And their, excuse me, their revenues are up about $107,000, which is 11.2% on the revenue side. That does incorporate the fee schedule changes that were just approved by the Park and Rec Commission in the middle of January, that increased their revenue by about $75,000. So all in all, their net budget is up about $50,000. Biggest increase is within administration, and that's really all in their salaries account. We did make an assumption last year, because the director's position was vacant, we filled it at a higher salary than what was assumed in the budget. And then they do have a union employee who is getting a step increase. What they're doing is combining their printing accounts. Throughout their budget, they have a couple of combinations going on, but they are moving their printing accounts from a couple of the other orgs and divisions, consolidating and imprinting. So it's $20,700 here, but the actual increase is only $1,200, about a 6.2% increase in their total printing. So you see decreases in other places. Beach and Court is up very minimally, $2,700, 0.94%. Facilities maintenance is up $29,000, and that's a little bit in full time, because they have some step increases, they have people that are relatively new and haven't stepped out. But also, their overtime is up $9,000. The director went through and calculated actual hours that are needed for beach refuse collection, incorporating the contractual increase in the current contract, and actually discovered that fiscal '25 is underbudgeted. So that's where this increase is coming from. It's not that they're looking to do more or expect to have more overtime, it's just a true-up of what overtime actually costs them. And if we look back in '24, they spent $28,000, $21,000 in '23, $23,000 in '22. They had $22,000 budget in fiscal '25, which probably is not realistic. So she's looking to bump that up to what she thinks is really needed for the hours that they need. Organized recreation is down minimally, and then grounds, fields, and buildings has a couple of new initiatives in it. In their groundskeeping services, they are adding $25,000 to hire a contractor to maintain dunes at Lee Beach, including removing all material on two of four dunes and material to replant with seagrass. This was done by, on a voluntary basis in the past, but it is a big undertaking, and they feel that it would be best to hire a contractor. So that's a $25,000 addition. And then they're also focusing on tree maintenance. The last couple of years have been a high amount for tree maintenance, and this year we are spending a lot of money on tree maintenance. Through December 31st, we've spent almost $23,000. The request for fiscal '26 is $39,000. So they're looking at historical usage, but also, they are looking to focus on one park per year and really take a look at the trees, do all the maintenance that's required, and kind of get them back up to where they need to be, so that not everything's being done on a reactive basis, but more of a proactive basis. So for fiscal '26, they want to focus on Tilly Park.
Just back to the dunes. Was that the conversation about all those invasives that were coming in, and all the volunteers were going and pulling them out? Is that what that was?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Forgot you guys were here.
So that's what's going on with their operating. And like I said, their, their revenues are up as well. There are some that are down, and those are really, pickleball was a new one. I think it was a little bit overestimated what we were going to get for that, so that's coming back down to reality based on what we're actually seeing.
Jen, sticking with that, what's the reduced? Jen, sticking with that, what's the reduced availability? What's that mean?
Let's see. Increase in open play scheduled times, reducing available reservation hours. And removal of dual lines on tennis courts requires lessons to be played on dedicated courts, further reducing time available for reservations.
So the, so we're losing revenue because we're dedicating time to the lessons and the court, and there's another, other court space that's available for reservations when they're running the tennis. And when you do open play, they're not paying, they're just, they're just showing up, right?
Is that accurate?
Correct. Yeah. So basically what it is, is there was a demand, a request for additional open play. So that holds those hours so we can't schedule, or people can't reserve those times. And then because we don't have the dual-line courts, the lessons are also taking place on the other courts. So again, it reduces the amount of overall time that's available for reservations.
And then you also do the league sort of thing, in the Thursday evening thing, so that's another time, and people sign up for there. And so those courts are dedicated for that. And so then, there's no other revenue you could get from the lower courts, because they notice when you go there, and those courts are dedicated to the league signup, and then other people come around, because it's a nice time, it's a late afternoon, but there's nowhere else for them to go because those lower courts aren't double-lined.
Well, any of the activities that are taking place are on those dedicated courts.
Is the demand still really high? Are still people who want to make reservations not able to make them because there's?
People are able to still make reservations. It's just we don't have as many, as much availability.
Yes, my question is if we had more availability, would those, would they fill? Or is Pickleball thing kind of trending out? Or is there other facilities in the area that people are using? The malls and the?
I think part of it is also that there are other locations that people are going to as well.
The mall, yeah. Got it. Thanks.
All right. Park and Rec Capital.
Jen, I have one last question. And maybe, Jen, you can send it to us, but in goals and objectives, you have establish a financial sustainability strategy to guide the department in decision-making and to create organizational resilience. I'd love to know what that?
That's actually on the capital plan.
Yep, there is a capital request specifically for that.
Love to hear that.
So on capital, they have a bit of a combination of kind of maintenance replacement of existing infrastructure and some new initiatives like the financial stability. The department had requested a couple of things at Cherry Lawn. $7,000 to fix the rock foundation along overflow parking and dredging of the Cherry Lawn Pond, which we heard about earlier. My recommendation is to delay the rock foundation until '26, '27, when we're planning to do the driveway. There are funds available in fiscal '25 to patch the area on the driveway, make it safe. But, you know, anything along that parking, if we're going to be tearing it up anyway, we'll do it all at the same time. And then for the dredging of the pond at Cherry Lawn, when we look at Park and Rec, they have two very large projects that are requested between Pear Tree and Weed Beach. They have the big drainage, or dredging project at Tilly Pond. And I honestly, I had some questions or some concerns about their bandwidth to manage all of that. And I wouldn't want us to tax now for the Cherry Lawn Pond and not be able to get to it. And we've collected that money and delayed because we don't have the bandwidth to address it. So between the two, Tilly Pond is more of a health concern. We'll get to Tilly Pond, but there's actual health concerns with the bacteria that is present there. It's resulting in calls to the fire department. So between the two, we thought that that was more of a priority.
I hear you on the bandwidth issue, and that is a concern. But I think the Cherry Lawn Pond is a serious problem. And I think we've been talking about it for a bit, and I think if the ability to dredge it might significantly increase the health of that pond, I think it's something that we should probably look at. But I don't know how you guys feel.
Comments?
I will say I too am concerned about the bandwidth issue with the major projects that are, that would be taking place, hopefully if the funding comes through. The, I would say out of the two, in my opinion, Tilly is a little bit more of a concern with the cyanobacteria, which is, it can release, when it blooms, it can release harmful toxins. As was mentioned, we get, actually, Shane Ryan left, you know, it also produces an odor of gas. Those people are calling the fire department, so it also, you know, uses, ties up those resources. And Tilly Pond is actually part of the drainage system, the town's drainage system and catch basin system. So it's also kind of part of the infrastructure. So the sediment pond is already basically kind of filled up, and it's all into the large ponds. So both of those ponds need to be dredged to help fix that, that problem. So I think there, I think both of them definitely need to have it done. But I think if we have to pick one, then in my opinion, Tilly would be the?
Priority, yeah.
The priority, and then get the Cherry Lawn.
Will the Tilly dredging help the flooding at all? I feel like that was a no when we did that study, right?
It does serve as a giant catch basin, if you will, in that system. I don't think it's?
I don't think it's a significant change.
I mean, the only thing, what helps flooding is having empty spaces where water can sit while the drainage system catches up. Tilly Pond is not that.
And you wouldn't be materially adding to the volume?
Well, it's set up where if a flood comes through, there's no capacity to take water, it's just going to go through it. So it's not like a cistern or something like that.
My little vote would be for the two pounds, but.
So talking candidly, the Weed Beach project and the Tilly, or the Pear Tree Point project, the thought is that these two projects would be happening simultaneously in the same budget year?
To be determined. We don't, we still have others. The planning and zoning is approved to Pear Tree Point. I think that was discussed.
Tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night. All right, so they've had their discussion, so that approval is coming shortly. But we're much further along for Weed Beach in terms of, we did, we had a bid once already. As soon as this gets approved, we're going to put it through that process. Pear Tree Point is a much more complicated project. And I don't, I don't know that we could say that the timing's going to work out to be overlapping between those two.
Do we have any idea how long those projects? If we're talking about concerns of bandwidth, how long those two projects may take or when we would start them?
I don't know if it's multi-year, but there's, it's certainly more disruptive. You've got to raise that parking lot. From an engineering standpoint, it's not that complicated. You're basically raising the parking lot, building a bow ramp and dredging it.
But we're closing the parking lot, basically.
Would happen.
Yes.
You know, they did a public hearing, which I went to, and it was, was really informative.
Yeah.
And I feel like the timing was phasing on the parking lot.
Right.
So not closing the parking lot entirely, right?
Yeah, hopefully we'll be able to have some limited access to the parking lot. The thought is it would start, Pear Tree would start like right after Labor Day.
Right.
And probably finish early, mid-July, something along those lines. And Weed Beach, we would expect probably about three months to complete.
And that work could start same time, Labor Day?
Well, obviously, we would have to rebid it and go out to bid. So whether we did that in the fall at the same time, or we do it in the spring, but those two would have some, you know, be major projects to be?
So Weed has to get rebid, definitely, because of the timing, yes. Because the week of last bid was last spring, right? Yeah.
Jen, where are you on the permitting process for Weed?
For Weed, those, the permits are all set.
No planning and zoning, all good?
No.
Weed's fully permitted.
Having gone to the tour this past weekend, when you rebid it, is there an ability to bid it without the trail, doing everything else but the paved trail? That would be interesting to see what that number is.
The bid breaks it down into different components. The way we did it last time, it was interesting, when the bids came back, the way the two bidders lumped different pieces of it, they were way off. I remember like one, in one category, I made these numbers up, it was $100,000, another like that front was $350,000. And it's just because they put different things in different places. So we had talked to Dan about when we had the opportunity to go out to rebid to kind of refine how he asks for things, so hopefully it'd be more apples.
Because I certainly, I mean, I love so much of what I heard there, and it looked, picturing some of the things that you want to do there looked, you know, terrific, but I will say that I felt like, looking at the circular trail, just sort of scream, sort of nice-to-have as opposed to truly, but that's my view, but I'd like to know what that would cost.
Yeah, and we'll get that. Jack's asked that for a while. We do want to mention that some level of path is actually not a nice-to-have, it's a must-have in order to be ADA compliant.
To get the votes.
You don't know now, so how is it?
Once you make improvements, then?
I'd like to see those regs.
Okay. And I specifically asked our consultant that question.
Okay. So going back to those two projects, Weed Beach and Pear Tree Point, probably could not start until after Labor Day. When are we talking about the dredging happening?
Those would be mostly in the fall. Again, you?
Okay, so they're all the same time? That's why I'm looking for an answer.
Yeah, we want people to be able to use the facilities. There will also be some permitting that's going to have to happen, approvals with EPC and things for the dredging. So once we know that, that'll take a few months as well.
I'm concerned about.
Because then what will happen is they'll do, they'll do the dredging, then everything is going to have to sit in those locations for a couple of months. It's like, the stores can get some water before it can be taken away. So we don't want to tie up the part, you know, we would kind of hope that the de-watering part would happen sort of over the winter when the facility wouldn't be so active.
Okay, so the expectation was these ponds will probably look the same this summer as they did last summer?
They'll probably get worse.
Right.
If we wait another 10, 11 months to do this work, then yeah.
I think that Jen's saying that?
Yeah.
For park usage, we would wait.
No, I understand that. I'm concerned though about the ponds waiting.
And we do have some funds in there for some of the pond treatments that we would be doing. We have money that we're doing now. Those had been, had not been done for a few years, and I think it's kind of what got the ponds into the condition that they're currently in.
Well, they're better now.
So, well, because we did some, after I got here, we did some late summer, and then again in the fall. So I think we'll be able to kind of stay ahead of it a bit more than what, than what happened over the last summer. We're really, really bad before we?
Dredging is going to make a real difference, but they are, they are in better shape than they were.
So one of the other issues, I think, was that there is a drainage issue into, and I'm saying this wrong and I apologize, there is fertilizer from area residences and land that is draining into that, correct? That is a problem with Cherry Lawn, Cherry Lawn specifically, not Tilly?
I can't say. I mean, we, the only thing that we put any fertilizer down on are the athletic fields themselves. The rest of the properties are not.
Right, but it could be area residents.
It could be other residents.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it could be.
It's possible, because that water also drains into what river? No, yes?
Tokneet.
Tokneet, okay. So?
There could be runoff from anywhere.
Right, 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 right. And I'm wondering if we can talk to our residents about, because if we're finding fertilizer?
Some awareness around environmental impact on the usage of some of those chemicals that it's valuable to help educate people on.
Are we stopping some of the fertilizing on the Cherry Lawn field, or are we continuing? How do we address some of that?
The soccer field, the commission decided a few years ago to try using only fully organic products, so we've netted down the treatment considerably.
Okay.
We started about two or three years ago. Unfortunately, that resulted, the field is in very, very poor condition. The field is not holding up to the level of light. It's terrible.
I wonder if we can find?
Alternative place?
Help us, because we got to figure out how to balance between the pond?
Right.
Field where, yeah.
The field is terrible.
I can totally appreciate that, but I also look at what's happening with the pond.
So, I know, it's really tricky.
And, and I, you know, I feel bad for the kindergarteners playing soccer, but part of me doesn't. I understand, but we have this field that so many people use, so many people use, and I don't mean to be tried, I shouldn't have said it like that, I apologize. I am very concerned about the health of the pond.
Let's put that down as maybe an add-back. I may, I hear you. Jenny?
Yeah, in the category of, one of your two, Monica's comment about the H-back. If you're looking at back-to-back year-over-year dredging of the pond, is there economies of scale combining them?
Yep.
And I, you know, I do agree, Cherry Lawn is more, is way more active than Tilly. So you, it's, they're both health concerns.
You mean as a park?
As a park, so.
Yeah. But Tilly, yeah, Tilly is getting some major.
Yeah. No, they're both important, but maybe.
Tilly's the one we get calls on.
Right, right, right.
If you're going to, I don't know if this is something that would be bonded or not, but you, you know, you're going to pay an F.A. and legal fee twice if you're going to do it back-to-back.
We'll take a look.
Maybe you could bid it together or something.
Can I build on something that was just, yes. And I coached garden Cherry Lawn for years. But, you know, is there ever a time that we do like the farmers do, which is just, we shut off the fields from use for a year so that it can reestablish itself and other things like that? I mean, there's a lot of fields in this town.
But there's not really, Jack. If you talk to any of these cities?
There is. There are not.
There's a lot, but nobody, they're so used. Like organizations are so looking for more fields.
Many of the grass ones, I mean, it sounds like periodically, we need to set them aside so that they can reestablish themselves.
Lori?
Well, Sandy Rich, our park supervisor, said essentially, when we did our parks tour with the commission this fall, he said the only way we can get to the day is like, nobody can plant on it for a while. But we don't have a lot of options to move the programs that we're putting there, is the problem. Whether they're the youth leagues or their, our programs. And we're trying to take more off of that, off of Cherry Lawn, if possible, but we don't really have any words.
No, that's you seven, you eight, you nine, yeah. I'm fully aware of that. But still, if we could stop that for a little bit, you'll be better in having it come back with strength, and that's?
Especially right now with the three elementary schools under the city.
Yeah.
A lot of those problems. That's a problem. So they're available.
Yeah, because that took a while.
That took a lot of patience.
They're requesting $14,500 for repair and replacement of railings on the accessible ramp at Maguon. They're old, there's peeling paint, rough surfaces that can result in splinters and that sort of thing, so looking to replace those. We talked about dredging of Tilly. That one has the cyanobacteria, we received the calls on it. Stripping of the paddle courts. Every five years, the courts are resurfaced, but every 20 years, they have to be stripped down to the aluminum. And this is part of an ongoing plan. We two have been completed, there's three more to go, about $20,000 per year. We talked about Weed Beach Meadow and Trail. We talked about Pear Tree. And again, as I said, those are, the concept is that those are not to exceed numbers. Small Capital, $5,000. Tree replacement, $6,000. From time to time, when a tree is taken down from damage, storm damage, or disease or something, there is a need to replace it. We, in Public Works, do this where we budget a small amount each year in capital for tree replacements. And we're looking to start doing the same thing in Park and Rec. We had tried it a couple of years ago, and it didn't really take. So we're looking to go back to that approach, rather than have it in the operating budget, because if for some reason there's a timing issue and they can't get it planted within the fiscal year, we do want to be able to have the option to roll the funds over and use them in another fiscal year. The capital fund allows us to do that. Replacement of a loader for $107,000. It's 20 years old, reached the? It's 20 years old, reached the end of its useful life. This would also include three attachments that would make performing various tasks more efficient, specifically looking at snow, sand, and log removal. 13,500 for accessible mats for beach facilities. Right now, they don't have these, and this would allow people of all abilities, including those in wheelchairs, to gain access to the water and experience our beaches to their fullest potential. This is also ADA compliance.
So, it's like the thing you roll out on the sand? And you can bring a wheelchair or a stroller or something like that down?
Right. So, it's not required by ADA, but it's kind of the intent and the spirit of ADA, making things accessible. $8,000 for a log grapple. With so much tree work being done and so much tree damage occurring, this would allow them to more easily handle large limbs and tree trunks. 36,100 for this financial sustainability strategy. This would be a study that would look at cost recovery and goal setting, and help the department establish a strategy and a policy that uses data to ensure that fees are being set in accordance with an established structure, and that fees are being set at appropriate levels to financially sustain the department. This was one thing, actually, when Jen interviewed and she talked about it, Kate and I got very excited, because it's a great concept. So, she's requesting to, she put it into place in Westport, she's looking to do the same type of study here, look at all the costs that go into providing the park services, and what should we be charging?
Great idea.
Do you have a vendor in mind, someone that you liked from before?
Yes, the proposal comes from the people I worked with when we did this in Westport, and basically it's a kind of a holistic thing. Part of it becomes philosophical, where the commission and the department will be involved into determining what level of cost recovery we want for different types of activities, you know, what should be open, basically goes by the beneficiary, who's utilizing it and who's benefiting from a particular service or amenity. So, it helps with that. It's also that software, it's a lot of behind-the-scenes information where we upload all of our costs, all of our revenues, and we can determine however detailed we want. We want to include debt service in that, right, because that's one of the costs for our different facilities. So, it will encompass all of that, and then we can fluctuate and you can plug into kind of the database and the software. Okay, if we're not meeting our goal, how do we meet our goal? Does it mean that we need more people to participate? Do we need to change the fee? Do we need to find a less costly way to provide that service? So, it really is kind of a holistic look at the department and how we would go through and cost set.
May I ask a question? Is this something that we've not done in the past?
My knowledge, no.
I have never sat down with you or your predecessors, I've never had a conversation about how you set the pricing strategy. I don't know that as a town, we were looking to focus on revenue generation, I think, from all the programs. My concern is if we start adding all of these factors into costs, including debt service, that we create an incredible, like a much higher rate that we would be charging for the programs, and I'm concerned as that revenue generation, and this is something I haven't talked about, like how do we look at, what are we charging right now, and is it not, you know, covering our costs? That's a problem, right? But we want to cover costs, but we also want to make sure that we're not doing it as a solely revenue generation, I think.
So, I think that goes back to the philosophical portion.
I think that goes back to the whole, they'll be placed on a continuum, goes back to the philosophical question, right? Which is part of where the commission gets involved and goes through this process, because there are certain things you're not going to charge anything for.
Right, right.
You know, parks and open spaces, and it would, it would, so just by doing this doesn't mean, oh, we want to be 100% cost recovery or whatever.
That's what I'm curious, yeah.
It can be, that's what gets determined throughout this process with the consultants. You might say, you know, we really want to have everything more tax-based, so that the entire, the entire community pays for the majority of everything that anybody would want.
Right, so not so much focused on revenue generation.
So, it'll break things down into different categories, where something you might want 0% cost recovery, something might be 10 to 20%, something might be 100% or more. So, it all depends, and that's part of this process that you go through with a consultant to figure that out. So, it doesn't necessarily mean, oh, we're going to jack up the prices and everything we need, you know, we need to make all of our money back.
Right.
So, that's all part of the process.
Right, and I would hope there would be like a historical, like if an organization, you know, that we watch where we've been in as far as slow rate, you know, if we need to do that, yeah.
And best factors from other towns, right?
Exactly, and that comes into play as well.
One size doesn't fit all here, we'll have a menu of places that decided this, and then to their point, we'd make decisions about where we want cost recovery. Mike, you were going to say?
Well, yeah, I think that's a very, you know, valuable, you know, exercise, and then part of that is also the discovery of, in a precise way, usage and fee generation and where it's all coming from. I know, you know, and you look at something from a philosophical standpoint as opposed to, well, we've always done it this way. Like, for instance, for many years, the Board of Ed, well, we don't charge, you know, we don't charge the wife for using our fields, and we get, the swim team gets to be there for free, or, you know, hockey parents have to pay the full load and not so much everybody else, because we told the hockey parents 20 years ago.
We probably shouldn't have this debate right now.
So, this is, so this is a good thing to do.
Thank you.
So, we can look at it all at once.
Yeah, we had quite a lengthy discussion at the last commission meeting about increasing what we were charging, you know, the little league and soccer, different sort of field usage, because we're charging much, much, much less than the Board of Ed comparably charges. So, we were looking at a, you know, increase, but it was a big increase for them, and, you know, we settled on something less than we were originally thinking, at least for this year, because we're hoping to get through this process, but we had, you know, quite a lengthy discussion, John was there, about, you know, should our cost of the extra cost to maintain the fields, which there are for sure, should that be borne by the users? Or should that be something that all of us as taxpayers cover, because it's a benefit to our community to have a really robust little league? So, those are the philosophical discussions you need to have as a community, but this will help us at least know, okay, how much that costs, and what is really the cost?
And if it does result in significant fee changes, that's something that's rolled out over time.
Right, right, right.
Not looking to shock people with big changes, but to get to a philosophy that we can stick with over a long period of time.
Right, but to search here, we wouldn't necessarily say, okay, now we know it cost us $72, we're charging it $72. We may as a community say, no, we all want to share a message.
So, I had spoken to Jen and Kate when you first discussed this, and I was extremely excited about it, but I do have a question, because this is really a cost accounting exercise we're fair on. So, is this a model that the consultants have that we could maintain and look at over future years, or is this a one and done?
No, it is something, there is some software that talks of it. There is an option if you want in future years, and I don't know if it's only if they come and get involved, but you'd be able to utilize it, and you could sit there and say now, okay, we're going to, we want to start a whole brand-new program, well, it fits into this category, so it'll help us figure out the price. So, it is something that we'd be able to use, and if we need to redo it at some point, you know, then we can always bring them in for a smaller fee.
Okay, so we're going to end up with the software that you can use by the department in the machine room.
Correct.
Personally, I think it's great.
Just a couple more. 5,800 to replace a lift gate for a truck that is rusted, poor condition. I think we attached some pictures, and it's bad. And then 11,400 for a portable sound system. The current system is inadequate for the larger events that we're doing. The sound system that they're looking at, and it's very complicated. It's old, it's complicated to set up, everything is wired. What they're looking at is something that is very easy for anyone to use, very versatile for smaller or larger events, and will provide clearer, louder sound and reach larger crowds. They use a sound system for a lot of events.
Hey, Jen, on that, would you consider sharing the sound system, for instance, with monuments and ceremonies when they do something?
Yeah.
For free.
Well, no, that's, depends on...
Well, we're all use, the same users here, so...
But yeah, and that, that's one of the things, is for some of these larger events, the system we have, nobody would ever try to use it. It's got a mixer, it's a whole new thing, so, and this would have much better sound. For some of the events, like we've had the REEDs, you know, and some other things like that, I think we'd be able to let other departments use them.
Perfect.
Or associated groups.
What's next?
General Government.
Get into the small ones now.
Anything else on parks and rec?
Yeah, one small. Baker, you have 11,000 for a fence. I would, and I'm not sure this is...
We actually funded that in the current year with...
That was done this year.
That was done, okay. I would love to have some idea on what we could do for porta-potties, or, you know, maybe something, I understand the neighbors aren't in favor, so maybe we do something a little bit more like Highland. But I think having these little kids going to the bathroom in the woods, some little bucket that their mom brings is, I'd like to think we could do better.
Monica, are you talking about Baker specific?
I'm talking about Baker, I'm talking about actually out here by...
The fields here.
The fields here. But Baker, yeah, especially where these, they're these little five-year-olds, you know, they're not diaper, but when they have to go, they have to go. I'd really like to see us do something.
Yeah, that was one of my thoughts when I said we would, we would give it a try again, that maybe we just, if we're able to enclose it similar to Highland, so people aren't looking at the blue plastic.
Yeah, so I don't know if we have to put it in a budget, but...
I don't think you need to.
I'd be supportive. Great, okay, perfect.
All right. General Government, very, a lot of very small departments. Overall, it's up 155,000, which is just a 4% increase. Couple of things to highlight, most of them are just a bunch of small pluses and minuses. Most of them are status quo, not any new initiatives, just business as usual. Where we do have some things that I want to note is in the Town Administrator's Budget, we have included $20,000 in professional services for a sidewalk consultant. Something we've been talking about, we're not entirely sure what shape that's going to take, but we're putting $20,000 in there because we want to do something. So, that's in the Town Administrator's Budget. The Assessor's Budget, they're up $21,000, but we did consolidate the $3,000 of Board of Assessment Appeals overtime into there, and they happen to have a lot of Town Hall Union staff. When we settled the budget, or when we adopted the budget, the union contract was unsettled, so it's kind of a double whammy of two years of increase in their full-time account. And that's similar in the Town Clerk and the Tax Collector, they have one non-union position in their full-time salaries, and the rest are union. In voter registry, the part-time salary is up significantly, and that's as a result of the increase that you approved for the registrars. We moved them up to, I think, $40,000. So, this reflects that, they received that mid-year 25 increase. And then in information technology, we have a couple of things going on in software maintenance and support. There's $21,000 that's needed for server maintenance. We didn't have that in the past, the servers were installed three years ago, and with the install was three years of server maintenance. So, now it's time to start paying that. And it is, it's a town-wide thing, and IT is kind of allocated some to the Board of Ed, some to the town, because we're all using the servers. And the other thing that we have in there is a new initiative called Placer AI. We have $20,000 for that, and it's a locational...
What it does is that it's a company that will track cell phones, and longer story, but basically through that tracking, it's anonymized, but they can tell where cell phones are going. So, for example, you could have, you could track to say, how many people showed up at Cherry Lawn Park at a particular hour? Where were they when they, before they were at Cherry Lawn? Where did they go after they were at Cherry Lawn? Right? How many of them are from DeRianne versus other towns? It really is quite remarkable that you can get that data, and I've got 10 other questions in my mind that I think would be helpful for us, particularly as we think about traffic and event attendance and hours at our public places and all that stuff. I think that data could yield some interesting insights that would help us manage all that. So, this $20,000 experiment this year is really an opportunity to look at that and say, what could we learn from that? One thing's for sure, in the next three months, I would like to have a sit-down, because I've got a bunch of questions that I'd like answered, I'm sure you guys have some as well, but we'll definitely report back to this board in terms of some insights that we've gotten from that.
Anonymized data?
Yes, well, you see this with Grand Central Station, if you've seen any of those maps, you can see the flood of cell phones coming in, and you know what towns are going to...
I have not, I didn't know that they did this.
They have all that stuff. There are certain, obviously some people have shut all those services off on their phones.
Right.
And so, they have an algorithm that sort of fills in the gaps and calculates where people are coming from.
I thought it was like trackers on the door.
What's that?
I thought it was like door trackers or something, like you see somebody walking in, you count how many people walk in.
No, cell phones.
Wow. I don't know about this, John. No, no, Marcy, we do have people trackers for the trains, that's different.
That's true. And they said, well, Jack Davis is a Town Hall, well, there's no surprise.
It's surprising, Jack Davis wasn't it?
Yeah.
I have a crack down the...
Big highlight on the revenue side was the investment income, but as I said, the treasurer has re-projected that. General Government Capital, the big number here is implementation of our payment processing improvements. This is related to that digital assessment payment study that we're doing, we just kicked it off this week. We met with them for our kickoff meeting. This is absolutely a placeholder, this was on the high side of what they have seen other people have for implementation, but as we move through the process, if we get the recommendations before we get to Board of Finance, we might have a better number, but for now, this is what we have for what we may implement from that study.
Do we see a cost savings by implementing this? Just like less personnel needs?
I don't, I don't think we would see it necessarily on less personnel, but depending on the methods of payment that we're using, or how maybe we consolidate payments through systems, we may get better credit card processing fees, something like that, but...
We need to do this.
Yeah.
About five different processes, and they're all charging this stuff.
Something different.
Because our monthly volumes are sort of fluctuating as opposed to...
So, yeah, Jen, I'm just, Kate, sorry about that. I'm just looking at priority three. Is that, where'd you get the...
That's a matrix that we have. It's, because it's a new initiative, it's not mandated, it's not like a critical, we have to have it. It's really great to have, in my mind, amongst all of these on this page, it would be my number one, but in terms of the matrix that we use, it's, it's not as critical as, say, like, replacement or fixing something that's a health and safety hazard.
Right. I guess I'm with Marcy, and I'm hoping that we actually can define how much we save by doing this.
Yeah, the problem is, is that there's not a direct cost that you can identify, because the purpose of this study is less cost savings, but more the experience of citizens making payments to the Town Hall, right? Because you got a lot, you got a lot of young people that don't have checkbooks, they barely have checking accounts, it's all done by vent, right? We simply have to accommodate these people, and this is, this study is going to define how we get there and then identify the software and other changes that enables us to accept all of that, literally all of it, but link it back to our accounting systems toward the payables flow and...
Because it's hard for them to tell right now what payment is coming into each, and I think that it would...
Exactly. We want to accept more electronic payments, but we don't want individual ones that we have to track down, we need that to...
We also don't want like, okay, you know, there's like an aggregate amount, yeah, how do you, yeah, exactly, that's what you were having, yeah. Okay.
We have our 60,000 that we annually put in for re-vow, which occurs every five years. We build up enough money to then contract for that, and our annual... years, we build up enough money to then contract for that and our annual desktop replacement, but we are also looking to have a combination of desktops or laptops with port replicator docking stations. Community Environment, very small grouping, up eight thousand dollars, which is just over five percent. The big changes here are cemetery maintenance, monuments and ceremonies have provided a cemetery maintenance plan, they're requesting fifteen thousand five hundred, which is a fifty-five hundred dollar increase, but historically, they've been spending thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand, I think realistically fifteen thousand is what it takes to maintain the cemeteries. The other grants were all kind of status quo with the exception of Kids in Crisis. Holiday Lights Grants, Museum of Darien were the same request that they've had in prior years. The Depot is a four percent increase, accounting for inflation and minimum wage increase, but no new services. Kids in Crisis increased their request by five thousand dollars. They are looking for additional funding for implementation of two-way text capabilities with the understanding that, you know, their target audience does a lot of texting, they don't necessarily pick up the phone, so they want to be able to accommodate the communication method that people are using. So it'd be an increase for this year and then we would expect to see it go back down next year.
Can you explain that? Yeah.
I was thinking about that, I feel like we have, we have so many organizations that are focused on, on mental health and, you know, children and I don't know, I just feel like, like we're pretty spread out and when I look at this, this is helping two percent of our population.
No, they're in the high school, they're doing a lot. I would respectfully disagree with you, I think Kids in Crisis has been doing a lot, they've worked a lot with our town after, you know, the events a few years ago, we do have a teen talk, is it teen talk, is that what it is called? There's a council at the high school. I actually think they're doing quite a bit and we have not given them, you see the fifteen hundred of the past few years. I think they have, you know, they stepped up a few years ago when we needed help and they came to the table and I think they're a phenomenal organization and I actually think it's worthy for it, would be my two cents.
No, I just don't understand what they mean by the two-way text capability. What, what new programming are they going to be implementing for five thousand dollars to our kids?
I think it's a study.
No, it's a, it's a system. So instead of you calling a crisis line, you can text and say, I need help and they can text back and forth.
That's where the kids are.
No, 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 oh, I know, I know, I'm just curious as to, I think there's a lot of organizations that are doing that, I'm curious where the programming is going to be, that they're going to influence the kids in our school to make sure that they're reaching out to Kids in Crisis.
Right.
If we're paying five thousand dollars for it, I want to make sure that those kids know that that's where they call because everybody's calling two-one-one, everybody's calling so many other organizations.
Two-hundred percent and that's something that we would work through and I think that's one of the responsibilities of the teen talk program within the high school.
Mike, continue your question, we talked about this consolidation of the Mental Health Task Force and it is actually pretty distributed, it's young people and older people, it's schools versus towns, it's actual committees versus sort of volunteer groups, it's all of that and it seems kind of spread out and not disjointed, but not concentrated and focused. I have the same problem with kind of environmental groups in town in terms of where do you go if you really want education or to move the needle on something? And so I think one of the things I tasked the task force with is for this year to think about, could we do a better job as an organizational matter with regard to all these different efforts and if so, what would that look like? But I think, like environmental topics, I think there's real value in trying to take a look at that and see if we can do something that's a bit more cohesive.
All right, just a quick question. Is this technology restricted to Kids in Crisis or can it be used across?
Same question.
Different. Pardon, so for example, I've done the mental health training program and I give me a nice sheet of paper, here's all the numbers I can call and it's like, oh God, I'm never going to remember all these, maybe I'll remember one, but I know if there's a number I can text, I'm going to like text help and it goes there. It sounds like that's what.
This is Kids in Crisis owned system. It wouldn't be a broader multi-organization system, this one that we're talking about would be specific to Kids in Crisis. So is there a campaign that the Darien Public School System is willing to implement to say that we're going to be using that five thousand dollars for exactly this program? I'm just curi-
No, no, it's a good question. Is the proposal give any more information about this and how it's going to be put in?
I have, I would have to look back, let me, I'd like to talk to them about this.
Yeah, it says what, I think this is funding for a portion of the project that includes developing and implementing the two-way text messaging capability.
Let's find out more.
I mean, I think it's a phenomenal idea, but I want to make sure that that's exactly what it's going towards.
Yeah, let's understand more about the.
Yeah. So do you, you want more information on their two-way text initiative or do you want some more targeted, targeted questions? Well, I'm sure she'd be totally willing to.
Is whatever they can give us.
Yeah. What is this, what is this? Who are you campaigning?
And if it's a portion, what percentage is Darien being asked to pay?
Paying, yes.
And is it a program that will be then available to everybody in Purple County or is this just, you know, like, it's whatever they can give us?
Okay.
Bill, this came up in F and B last year because you're right, Monica, and, you know, there's all these organizations and the question is, how many are doing the same things?
Yep.
And then, you know, which ones, you know, are better? I mean, that sometimes happens, my daughter did an essay on small churches where everybody had to have an alcohol program, everybody had to have this where it would be better served if this one's serving that and that one's serving that area. And I know that's hard because these are many volunteering organizations, but it would be nice to know across the board and believe me, I'm based upon my own family, wellness is a number one priority for anyone in town.
Yeah.
So, but it'd be nice to know who's doing what.
Yeah, I mean, Human Services, Youth Commission, the Depot, like.
They sit on this council.
Mental Health.
But they have the Health and Human Services planning council and they could be having this conversation as a strategy going forward.
They sit on the Mental Health Task Force.
But that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I think, don't get me wrong, Kids in Crisis is a phenomenal organization that has been so impactful as a community, certainly since 2020, so.
Hundred percent. Which is why I need your.
And they're different, they're definitely different than a lot of the other organizations. I'm just curious to see, are we willing to adopt them as our primary mental health coordinator for this town? And I, I want to know.
I'm not prepared to do that.
I'm not prepared to do that either.
Nearly enough facts and perspectives and so this was the impetus behind my request to the task force that just look, this is, I'm sure these are great, but it's disjointed and I can't get my mind around what we're doing and if we can't do it, then it's not clear and compelling to the public and we need to do it, we need to do it better. So let's take the time this year to sort this out, fund this for now, but in next year's budget, all this needs to be pulled together in a much more.
But they should also be able to get us.
I do want to know about this two-way communication.
I mean, they, they have all kinds of information, we just maybe have not pulled what we need from them, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get that for you. Land Use, two departments here, Planning and Zoning and the Building Department in Planning and Zoning, the major increase is in full-time salaries. Overall, they're up four point one-three percent, but they have the issue of many Town Hall Union employees getting step increases as well as contract being unsettled at the time that we adopted the fiscal twenty-five budget. And similar in the Building Department, a lot of Town Hall employees fairly newly hired in stepping, but also they have that new standby contract proposal that we saw in the Fire Department, so they are actually up forty-nine, fifty thousand dollars, which is eight point nine-six percent. The revenues for them, Planning and Zoning fees are stable and we see a decrease of four hundred fifty thousand dollars in building permits and that's because we're only projecting fifty thousand dollars from Corbin as building permit revenue in fiscal twenty-six. So we've ridden that wave and now that's done. Land Use Capital, they did request replacement vehicles for the Building Department and for Planning and Zoning, I did not recommend funding those, we have four hybrids on order that we're purchasing with ARPA funds and there's a plan to redistribute vehicles once we get those. And then the Plan of Conservation and Development, we already funded fifty thousand dollars, the department had requested seventy-five in fiscal twenty-six, twenty in fiscal twenty-seven, I'm pulling all of that forward because they need to have all of their funds available so that they can actually write the contract, it's not based on their cash flow, but when they need to contract. And out in twenty-six, twenty-seven is another piece of that that they might need to pay for, but we need to pull that one forward. Our last group is Health and Human Services, again, a group of small kind of status quo budgets. Overall, they're down twenty-eight thousand dollars, which is about one point six percent. In Human Services, their outside assistance, we are seeing an increase of six thousand dollars for their essential needs. They, sorry, increase of five thousand dollars for essential needs because they have exhausted ARPA funding, they paid out about ninety-two thousand dollars of essential needs money from ARPA, but now that that's done, we need to bring it back up to where we used to fund it. And then in program expenses, they're up about a thousand dollars because providing the mental first aid, mental health first aid training was paid through ARPA and now they're going to pay it through here. And then in the Health Department, they're down and it's really because of two accounts, full-time salary is down, they've had some attrition and we've hired at lower salaries than anticipated in the budget. And then software maintenance and support, they're proposing changing over to the Open Gov platform, they have a capital request for that and so they won't have maintenance and support in the first year, but we will see that go back up in twenty-seven, fiscal twenty-seven after it's implemented. And a small decrease in their revenues and that's in Youth Services, we looked at historical revenues and brought it down based on historical trends. And then the Human, Health and Human Services Capital, the only thing there is implementation of Open Gov for the Health Department for thirty-six thousand dollars. They do a lot of work with all the other permitting and inspection type departments and it would be great for them to be on the same platform, it would be beneficial to the customers and beneficial to the departments to all have access to that information.
And I think that was it for our budget review.
Questions? Okay. Jennifer, thank you, great helpful, and speaking with the spreadsheets, I think that worked out, is everybody comfortable with that?
Yes, great idea.
Supposed to. Okay. All right, last two items, just for review and approve minutes for January twenty-first special and regular meetings. I read through those and didn't have any changes, does anyone have any edits to meetings? Got to get a motion to approve the minutes for the special and for the regular meeting in January twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. Sarah moves, Mike seconds, all in favor. Jen, review, flood update, I'm working on it, I will have that soon, the beautification is coming, we just appointed the two D members tonight, so I will have them come in at a meeting after our budget season. And then finally, flag redesign, you all got a note from Aris Cavanna and he, definitely take a look at that, the thing I need everybody's input on is the updated flag designs from the surveys, he had a lot of input, both in terms of what was ranked, but also in folks saying, hey, we've got some ideas as well, our graphics designer came up with a few new suggestions, so take a look. One thing I want to emphasize to the public and we've got a few comments about this, this is not about one guy from Darien High School redesigning the town's flag, this is about him having an initiative that says, I'm interested in doing this, what do you think? I said, well, if we're going to do this, we need lots of public input, we need to build a consensus in town around something, we need to make sure that everybody's okay with this in a fairly large scale way before we initiate a change because after all, we're all change reluctant. And so Aris, to his credit, is leading that process, he's done a great job with the survey, we need another round of that. Once we have that second survey done, Aris will come back to this board and we'll take it from there.
We have a Darien involved town involved in this on the survey.
We have a hugely involved town, I think Kiwi was pretty surprised at the input that he got, but he's on, he's doing a great job and.
Good, great learning experience for them.
Haven't killed his spirit yet.
He hasn't admitted that, and has not, he says, I was really surprised by this. Welcome to our happy world. Okay, I think that is it, anything else with a good order? I have a motion to adjourn. Mike moves, R C seconds, all in favor. Thank you very much.